Hi everyone, thank you for tuning in into our webinar tonight, our Breathwork webinar. We are so excited to have you here. My name is Mariana and I am the holistic manager at Rhythmia. And with me tonight, we have Gio or Giovanni, the founder of Elemental Rhythm Breathwork. So tonight, just if you feel like you want to start chatting in, tell us where you're tuning in. Maybe something that you're grateful for tonight to just, you know, start moving that energy. We'll be having a little discussion at the beginning. Then we'll have a breathwork session led by Gio. And at the end also feel free to keep putting on some questions in the Q and A because we'll get to you at the end for some of those questions. So, thank you so much for tuning in. Gio, thank you as well for being here with me tonight. So, let's go ahead and jump in. Tell us a little bit about you, how you ended up in Breathwork and yeah, maybe a little bit of your time here at being a guest speaker at Rhythmia.
Yeah, absolutely. First off, thanks for having me. It's an absolute pleasure to be here to share with some of the Rhythmia community, which I feel like I've become such a part of over the last, you know, five or six years. Maybe actually more now 2016 while time flies. So tonight I'm gonna all share a bit about my story and talk a bit about Breathwork. And again, if you guys want to type in the chat, you know where you're from, what you're grateful for, we'd love to hear from you guys. And we'll talk a little bit about questions, talk a little Breathwork. You can ask some questions about Breathwork as well. And then we're gonna lead you guys on a Breathwork experience. It's gonna be about a 30-minute experience. And hopefully you're in an area where you can like lay back and relax and listen to music, put your headphones on. And we're gonna try to go for a little bit of a deep dive here. So if you've been to Rhythmia before, you know, you might re-experience something like that. So if you can type in the chat, the main chat room is disabled, okay? So we're just getting some answers here. Okay, so only the Q and As open then right now. I'm not sure if we can change that. For those trying to type in where they're from and what they're grateful for. But we can, we can post them as questions. So I was gonna ask you guys, you know, who had been to Rhythmia before, who had done Breathwork before, but I'll just speak to it anyways because you guys can't answer it, I won't see that. So for me, you know, trying to make a long story short, but I grew up and just around the Toronto area and my whole life and upbringing, I kind of was made to believe that my net worth and my self-worth was the same thing. You know, lower middle class, saw a lot of people around me that were really successful in high school and growing up and had fancy things that I wanted, I didn't have. And you know, my parents always told me, you know, if you want to be respected, if you want to be like important and good and happy, you need to make money. And so I went on this crusade of serial entrepreneurship from a young age, just trying whatever I could do to make money, had a very transactional life. And eventually after a lot of hard work, a lot of ups and downs, a lot of pain, suffering and you know, bouts of anxiety and depression and all that crazy stuff, I finally started to make a little bit of money. And I realized very quickly that it wasn't the answer. You know, I realized that I still felt like something was missing. I felt down, anxious all the time, stressed out, poor sleep, like all the things, you know, edge of burnout. And I remember, you know, the first time really felt like spirit was talking to me, kind of had this daydream where I looked at my hands and I was like sitting at the edge of my bed. I saw these old wrinkly hands. And the thought that came into my mind was like, you know, you're a clever guy. You figure out how to make a little bit of money, good for you. You're gonna do the same thing for the rest of your life. And you're gonna wake up an old man at the edge of this bed and you're gonna look back and nothing you did was really important or even mattered at all. And it kind of like stuck with me in a weird way. And I realized in that moment, what I was feeling was of the feeling of unfulfillment. I had no purpose and I was feeling completely unfulfilled. And, and I couldn't unfeel that. So it just stuck with me, everything I did was feeling more and more. Life was getting a bit darker. I didn't know the answer. I realized like I was a smart guy, but this was a problem like of the heart. It wasn't something to figure out with my mind. And so, you know, I started reading books and it's kind of like sparked this kind of spiritual awakening, I guess. And that word at the time would have been very woo-woo for me and I wouldn't have, like someone said that, I would have been like, you know, probably walk the other way. What was happening was like a, like the darkness came in to kind of help shift me on my path. And these crazy synchronicities started happening, which I'm sure a lot of you that have either been to Rhythmia or have made it to this call started realizing, you know, you start seeing things, you start hearing things. And for me, as soon as I heard ayahuasca for the first time, like a light bulb went off. And something in my heart was just like so curious. I knew nothing about it and you know, obviously, you know, you wanna understand the meaning of life. You go to Google and type in, "what's the meaning of life?", expecting it's gonna be an answer. How do I solve all my problems? But you know, I did this dive on YouTube and just watching video after video, you know, this was like before Rhythmia even existed. And I found myself connecting with a retreat center down in Brazil at the time. And I went to go tell my wife, who was pregnant with my second child at the time, like, "hey babe, I'm gonna go to the jungle and drink some medicine. It's gonna make me hallucinate and probably crap my pants and throw up. And I think it's gonna be really good for me." And she looked at me like I had three heads and she was like, "are you insane?" And everyone thought I was pretty crazy, I was always kind of the crazy guy, but this was like a new level of craziness. So it's a lot of negotiation. I kind of talked, talked her into letting me go and I went for two weeks. And if you've been to Rhythmia, you know what a week of medicine can do. Like literally, like I died and was reborn in one of my first experiences. And it showed me in that moment how little I knew about anything, which was kind of scary, but also exciting. You know, like everything I'd known, I had to look at now again a different way. And I knew that when I came back, I had to make a lot of changes. And I came back and I started meeting new people and I started looking for a tribe that was out of the bubble that I lived in my whole life. And I started finding it and within a couple of years, I met a guy by the name of Wim Hof. You guys may have been familiar with him, he's an Iceman from, from the Netherlands. He has all these crazy Guinness World Records and we became friends. He invited me to a training in the States. And I went there without any expectations, didn't really even know what I was walking into, to be completely honest with you. And he had introduced me to Breathwork. And when I got there, I met 30 or 40 people from all different walks of life, similar to like a kind of crowd you might find at Rhythmia. And person after person is sharing these stories of how, you know, being in nature, doing Breathwork, cold exposure had transformed their lives, you know? Chronic pain, anxiety, depression, you know, insomnia, like you name it. And I'm just like, wow, this is super interesting. Like this another aha moment like I had when I kind of found ayahuasca the first time and started hearing and seeing what people were experiencing there. If you haven't watched, I have a documentary out on YouTube called Psyched Out and Jerry's also interviewed him. Because that's when I came back, I felt like I had to share ayahuasca with everyone. Then when Jerry started doing it in a way bigger way, I was so excited. So anyways, back to the Breathwork. So everyone's, all these crazy stories and I was like, okay, I don't know why I'm here. I thought I was just here maybe to take a picture with Wim on the mountain in my shorts. Might be good for my Instagram. But I went through the whole week and it was a crazy week. And at the end, he brought us through this, this deeper Breathwork experience, you know, kind of like the ones you get Friday, Saturday and Sunday at Rhythmia. And all of a sudden, I'm breathing, going through it, start feeling these vibrations. They start getting stronger and I just keep going with it. And all of a sudden, I have an out-of-body experience where I'm staring down at myself from like the top of this 20-foot ceiling log cabin. And I see myself laying on the mat and I'm just like in disbelief of what's happening. You know, like, like another one of those like ayahuasca type experience, but I didn't drink anything. And the fear kind of snapped me back into my body. I remember opening my eyes and crying, crying like I had never cried before, like a baby. And it felt so good. And this voice came back, this is like this voice is like my higher self, I guess, or spirit. It sounded very similar to the voice, you know, you hear in ayahuasca, like almost like a consolto. Telling me, "it's okay, you know, like you don't have to try so hard or be so hard on yourself. You're doing a great job." Like all these comforting, nice things it was saying to me, which I didn't really say ever to myself. You know, it's like, you know, "you gotta do harder, you're not good enough." You know, like although I worked very hard and I was doing okay. And it really shocked me and I came back from that trip and I was like, okay, I need to figure out what that, what that experience was. And around that same time, I had been invited to come to Rhythmia for the first time. And it was like two worlds were colliding for me, you know? And I really quickly saw how powerful the two modalities kind of work together. You know, because they, they bring you to similar spaces, but from a different kind of pathway, you know? Help you to clear the mind, help you to open your heart, help you to kind of see things from a different perspective. And the one thing that I love about Breathwork and I love ayahuasca as well is that, you know, you don't need a shaman to come with you home to do Breathwork. You know, you can do it every day, you can do it on your own. And it really helps to integrate your experience, also helps to prepare for your experience. Like if you can do Breathwork before you come to Rhythmia and after, like even better. And the gifts and the insights keep coming. And so many times that I, because every time I go to Rhythmia as a guest speaker, I also am so lucky enough to be able to drink the medicine for four nights. I was just there last week and I feel like, you know, I've been reborn again. I know that I also get to continue that journey with the Breathwork when I get back. And, you know, from, from there, you know, like, like around that time, we developed this, this whole, I came back and I started really experimenting with Breathwork in a way, learning from any teachers that I could, that could help me to understand how to get back to those deeper experiences. Like it was different than the Wim Hof method, which like kind of changes your state and helps you to, you know, there's a few benefits to Wim Hof method that I really love. But this was that deeper journey. And we started using the rhythm of music, very specific meditations, different modalities, different types of breathing, different breath holds. And it was happening and we were getting there time and time again. And people were having these experiences. And when I started sharing this with people, it was the first time in my life that I felt truly fulfilled. I was being in service to others and I was seeing the impact that it had on them. You know, that, that I was not responsible for their transformation. I was able to create a space where they can have their own transformation, which is again, very similar to Rhythmia. This beautiful safe space is created for you to go and open yourself to something greater, to go deeper within yourself, to unlock, you know, beliefs and to release, you know, trauma and things that have been stored inside of your body, inside of your subconscious mind. And, you know, around that same time, you know, when I met Jerry and the whole Rhythmia staff and I was open to share, I said, "look, if you guys ever need a guest speaker, you know, I would love to share." And that kind of started this, you know, eight-year relationship, which eventually, you know, the last couple of years, got an opportunity to really work hand-in-hand with Dr. Mariana and help to really develop, you know, their Breathwork program and the aftercare program as well. And it's been such an honor to be able to share that, to be able to hear from some of you guys that have reached out and some that even come to the weeks that I'm there and get to kind of really connect and share in a way. It's changed my life, you know, and it continues to change my life every single time I go. I've been over 20 times already. That's kind of the story, the short, short version of the story about, you know, how I got to Breathwork and how I kind of connected with Rhythmia.
Yeah, and it's such a powerful tool because as you were saying, like you can use it before drinking the medicine after, but also for a lot of people that can't drink the medicine because of medical conditions or because, you know, the meds or whatever, they can also have such a big powerful experience from just using the medicine of the breath. It's like there are two medicines that really combine together, ayahuasca and the breath. So, here at Rhythmia, we use it before and then after. And that is always like last week that you were here, it's such a different, like such a shift, right? To see people when they're just coming in like all nervous and scared maybe, or anxious and they come and like they start breathing and it's like so profound and like they start opening up and then like a whole different energy on Friday when they're like have gone through the process, have opened up, have, have done everything. And they're more like, you know, you know, like I'm, I'm still going deep, I'm still going for miracles. In such a beautiful transformation, yeah. So, yes, I think we can go transitioning maybe into our Breathwork part, so you can...
Yeah, but maybe, maybe just before that, I just want to share a bit more about like my experience at Rhythmia. And, you know, like some of my friends, they joke with me and they're like, you know, "how many times you can do medicine? You must be really messed up." You know, and, and in the beginning, there was a lot of like inner healing to do. But every time I went, my, my relationship with the medicine has gotten deeper. And it keeps on revealing things to me that just keep making my life better. You know, like these limiting beliefs, this is last week I went. You know, like it was a challenging week in many ways. And I had the most incredible breakthrough, you know, about believing in myself and clearing out doubts that I had from things that happened to me in childhood, which were so subtle and so deep that, you know, if I hadn't done all that previous work when I got there. And so I tell them, you know, this is an exploration of me going into myself and then integrating into my real life. And it helps my business, it helps me to be a better dad, it helps me to be a better husband, a better friend, a better teacher. Like it blesses myself in so many ways, like, like I can't even begin to explain, you know, what, what a cheerleader I am for this, this medicine, especially at Rhythmia. You know, it's in such a safe place, you know, with all the classes and the programs that I've even brought my mother. I tried to bring like all my closest friends about my brother. And I brought my mom and my mom, this type of person that never drinks. She, she maybe smoked a joint once in her entire life when she was a teenager, never touched it again. And I, I didn't even know if she was sure what she was getting into, you know? She thought like she could hang by the pool and just like kind of yoga retreat. And I kind of told her, you know, what it was. And she came and she did the whole week and it changed her life. And you know, she's a little bit older, so it's never, never too, too soon or too late to make that call, you know, if you're feeling it in your heart, if you're feeling this something that's pulling you, it's like, like make that call, like hop on, hop on the phone with the Rhythmia guest consultants, you know, and, and just talk to them, you know, share where you're at and, and, you know, try to make it happen. Because the, the one thing that many people that I've brought have said to me that commonly is like, "I wish you would have made me come sooner." I'm like, "I can't make you come, you know, you come when it's the right time for you." But they all said, like I've been telling them, "hey, I think, you know, this will really help you." And they just weren't ready and they finally came and they saw what I was talking about because they saw what I'd experienced. And even from the first time I did ayahuasca, when everyone thought it was crazy back in, you know, 2012, before anyone was talking about it, they started to see the change in me. Like they noticed, they're like, "what's, what's different? Like something different about you, your face looks different, you're happier, your eyes look different." My wife noticed it. And that ripple effect of what the change happens within you, you bring that back with you and it, it kind of permeates into all the people in your life. And it's such a beautiful thing. So, so yeah, so I just wanted to share that because Rhythmia has changed my life and I wanted to make it clear that I'm such a believer in it and that that's why I work with, with Rhythmia and I do the Breathwork and I come three times a year. And so tonight, you know, we're gonna share with you an experience. And we've got some really special music coming. It was actually recorded at Rhythmia, you know, from some of the musiqueros. And something that I found powerful with Breathwork and even with, with plant medicine is the power of the music to help guide your journey. And if you've been to Rhythmia, you know exactly what I'm talking about. And if you haven't been, but you're going, which it seems like some people in the chat are coming soon, like, like it's, it's just magical. And, and they say that the musiqueros, when they drink the medicine, it kind of creates this clear, clears this vessel, this energetic kind of portal within them. And they become the instrument and they're singing to the medicine, they're singing to nature and they're bringing in this vibration that, I'll tell you many times, the music alone in, in ceremony has created miracles for me, has guided me to these places that I probably wouldn't have been able to get there in silence. I'm gonna share some of that music with you guys tonight as well. Did you want to add something, Mariana?
No, I think we're good. I think people are ready to breathe.
Ready to breathe, okay. So, so number one, make sure you're not driving, make sure you're not on water, never do Breathwork in a place where, where you getting lightheaded or passing out could create a danger for you or anyone around you. So like not like, you know, cutting your, your tree up in the tree on a ladder or anything like that. Laying down on a couch or on the floor, on a bed is the best place to do it. Even sitting up sometimes, you know, like you could get lightheaded and fall over. So just lay back and relax. If you got a pillow, that's good, maybe a blanket nearby is also really good. Now, if you're pregnant or if you have seizures, then I wouldn't recommend doing the Breathwork. You can still listen to the music and just go at your own breathing and it can still be a very powerful experience, okay? Now, if you're, if you're have really like any serious health conditions and you're not sure if it's safe for you, for this, I would also err on the side of caution and not do the Breathwork. Just do a simple breathing pattern that's, that's gentle for you and follow along with the meditation, listen to the music, okay? Thumbs up? Okay, so I'll explain now, we're gonna do like three or four rounds of breathing. The breathing is a rhythmic breathing, so we're gonna breathe through the rhythm of the music. And just to start, I'm gonna invite you guys, put one hand on your chest, one hand on your, on your belly. And we're gonna inhale through our nose, exhale through our mouth, it's like a ha sound, like that. Excuse me. And I want you to practice, just take a deep breath into your belly. So this upper hand's not gonna move. And breathe into your nose and just try to make your lower hand expand away from your spine. Your belly button is moving away from the spine, so deep breath in. Exhale through the mouth. And if you have trouble doing this, don't worry, we don't get it perfect. If you're type A and you're gonna overthink, anything I'm about to say, just forget it. Just do your best and I'm gonna be prompting the whole way through. The, the best thing, the worst thing you can do is again, your mind trying to get it right. The best thing you can do is just do your best and breathe as deeply as you can, okay? So again, hand on your chest, hand on your belly. Exhale through the mouth. Okay, next one we're gonna do, we're gonna do two inhales. So inhale to the belly, inhale to the chest. So first feel the belly expand, chest, exhale, belly, chest, exhale. Try to relax your shoulders one more time. Okay, so that's the mechanic. Now we're gonna do it one more time, same kind of sequence, but try to do like a wave, like one deep breath that goes belly-chest like this. Okay, so that's the mechanics. You don't have to get it right, you don't have to get it perfect. If you can't do it or worried about belly-chest, just don't even think about it. Full deep breaths, okay? Next is the rhythm, four rhythms. Earth, water, air and fire. So earth is slow, four breaths in, four breaths out. So be in, two, three, four, out, two, three, four. Next will be water, so in for two, out for two, so in, two, out, two. Air is a little bit faster, in, out, in, out. And finally fires like 30 seconds of full speed. So if you know pranayama, you can do breath of fire, which is forcing your exhalations. Or just breathe as quick as you can, something like this. And I'll be telling what to do the whole time. Now, if you have trouble breathing through your nose, it's okay to breathe through your mouth. If you want to switch it up, you can also breathe through your mouth during the experience. Recommend nose breathing. The, the, when you breathe through your nose, it filters the air, it warms the air, moistens it, spins it, so goes deeper down to your diaphragm. It also synchronizes your left and right hemispheres. But when we manipulate our breath, there's different Breathworks, different breathing patterns will create different reactions in your body, okay? So for this one, we try to keep it balanced into the nose, out to the mouth. But again, if you have trouble with that or your nose is bothering you, you can also breathe through your mouth. At the end of each round, we're gonna do a short breath hold, so all the way in. We're gonna hold it, we're gonna squeeze a little bit and then we're gonna exhale with a humming sound, just like this. You can practice with me, so take a deep breath in, hold it, squeeze, three, two, one. Just let that ring as long as you can. So the vibration is gonna stimulate the vagus nerve and it also increases nitric oxide production. Nitric oxide is a molecule that you only get through your nose. And when you do that breathing with, with that humming, it'll increase it like 1500%, so 15 times. And they say that nitric oxide helps to reach altered states of consciousness without, you know, any kind of plant medicine or anything like that. And then stimulating the vagus nerve, a lot of us have a lot of stress, vagal tone gets low. It, it, it will affect all the functions of the body. So stimulating the vagus nerve through these breathing techniques can be very helpful, okay? After that, we're gonna guide you through a little bit of a guided meditation. And then we'll come back and we'll, you guys can share in the chat your experiences. I'm open for some Q and A. Okay, so before we get started, does anyone have any questions? You can drop those in the chat real quick. Otherwise, if you need to kind of get yourself situated, headphones, pillow, blanket, get, get ready. Now, a few things you may experience, if you've never done Breathwork before. You may feel vibration in your body, you may feel tingling, you may feel hot, you may feel cold. You may, the sound, your, your auditory experience may change, like you're underwater or something or your ears are clogged. You may see visions, colors, have vivid memories come up. You may, you may see like flashing lights, like anything that happens is basically because you're changing the way you're breathing. And if you want that to come back to normal, just stop listening to me. Slow your breathing down, breathe through your nose, extend your exhales, okay? Into the nose, out through the mouth. Someone just asked a question in chat. Okay, so the other thing that I just want you to know is like, you're doing this at your own pace. So if it feels too much, listen to yourself. If you feel you want to push that edge and see what happens, like that's okay. But remember, you're in full control at all times. Stop listening to me if at any point it feels uncomfortable or you don't want to proceed. The scariest thing that could happen is something called tetany. It's when your hands lock up like this, or you make these weird things, it's like a cramping sensation. It's, it's normal, it's common, it doesn't happen to everyone. If it happens to you, I promise it'll come back to normal shortly, within a few minutes. You can continue to breathe through it if it happens, but if you want it to stop, you can just slow down the breathing, okay? So, with no further ado, I think that's all the info you're gonna need to have a great session. So just a few tips, just remember, like do your best, full deep breaths. If you don't have the depth of breathing, you're not gonna go as deep. So really feel that expansion. And just trust yourself, okay? All right, so I'm gonna play the music, here we go. And we'll just start by taking a few slow deep breaths all the way in. Just fully exhaling, relaxing our shoulders. And I invite you to think of one thing you're grateful for today. As you take another deep breath in, you slowly exhale, what's one thing you're grateful for today? The next thing I invite you to do is you're focusing on this item of gratitude or feeling of gratitude is to set an intention. Use the intention to work on something or to get an answer or insight or to find a way to make it to Rhythmia, whatever it is for you, you know, think of that intention. And I just want you to close your eyes, maybe think of a word that represents, imagine you're planting like a little seed of light, of potential into your heart. Just take a deep breath in. We're starting to breathe breath here. Again, breathing into the nose and out through the mouth. Two, three, four, out, two, three, four. In. And, or full deep breaths, in. Just bring in your awareness to the air that's flowing into your nose, falling it into your belly. Fully exhaling, relax your jaw, relax your shoulders. That's it, in, in. Just deeper and deeper through each breath. On the first round, you're gonna start to feel the resistance, it's normal. Just trying to settle the mind, let it go. Starting to accept first. So we're gonna pick it up, it's a water breath. So in, two, out, two, in. Deep breaths. Belly, chest, exhale, great job. Your awareness of each breath. Just connecting with yourself, trusting yourself, just try your best to let go. Keep your awareness on each breath. Some thoughts may come into your mind, just come back to your breath, in, in, out. Belly, chest, so sharp inhale, relax the jaw, let it all flow out. Pick it up here, air breath, out, in, out. That's it, pick it up. Just let it become natural, breathing with the rhythm. Great job, that's it, keep going. Feelings you have coming on, any sensations of the body, your awareness too. Just keep breathing. Get other mind into the body. That's it, great job everyone. We're gonna go to fire breath, a few seconds, remember that's full speed, best you can. Here we go. Go in, keep pushing. Do your best, relax your shoulders. In, out, in, out, keep breathing, keep breathing, a few more seconds, keep going. Here we go, three, two, one, take a deep breath all the way in. Hold, you can squeeze your pelvic floor. Hold, you can squeeze your pelvic floor. Keep holding. We're gonna exhale, we're gonna do a buzz breath. I'll count you down, three, two, one, let it go. Just allow your body to relax after this first round. Just coming back to a slow deep breath. Slow inhale. Just really find your depth here in between rounds, deep inhale into your belly, try to feel the stretch up in your rib cage, just opening yourself to go deeper in this next round. Have to give yourself a little shake. Shaking the wrists. You kind of movement you took in your body, if you're feeling it, just really focus on that depth. Deeper and deeper, let's get to the second round, so in. That's it. So listen to the music, that healing vibration of the flute, guitar. The drum. Just connecting with your breath, this rhythm. As you breathe in that chi, the life force energy. That which connects you to all of nature, your breath, connection to life. Really just in this moment, each breath, try to connect with it a little bit deeper. In. In, water breath. Fast and go, in, two, out, two, in. Just feel the rhythm of the music. You're doing great, just feel the energy rising within you, that life force. Feeling more and more alive with each breath, as your mind clears and your heart opens. Feel that rhythm, doing great. Focus on your breath, focus on your intention. Full deep breaths, sharp inhale, full exhale, relax your shoulders. Just make each breath count. Do it for yourself, you showed up tonight. Believe in yourself. You're worthy, you're supported, you're powerful, you're loved. You're evolving in each breath. Transformation never stops, well, sometimes it feels like you're going backwards. It's all part of this bigger planet for you in this life. As you can see that and surrender to it, everything is good. Not easy. Thank you. Thank you for the lessons. Just deep breath in, deep breath out. In for two counts, out for two counts. In, two. Explain that rhythm, don't overthink it. Belly, chest. And just focus on that depth, full breaths, all the way in, all the way out. Pick it up here, air breath, in, out. Just connect with the element of air, the intensity. A strong wind can move you mysteriously. Don't see it, you feel its power. Each breath connecting you back to nature, just like the plant medicine. True nature. Just to be alive, to thrive, to grow, to expand. In, out, in, out, that's it, stick with it, you're doing great. Go to fire breath here, get ready, here we go, full speed. Do your best. Keep breathing, keep breathing. Here we go, okay, we're almost there, a few more seconds, keep pushing. Coming up to a hold again here, three, two, one, deep breath all the way in, deep, 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 hold it. Hold. And let it go, buzz breath. You can hold on empty. Just relax your body, feel that stillness. Feel that urge to breathe, take a slow, deep breath back in. Just coming back to your breaths, we're just coming back to a really slow breath here on the inhale, just expanding all the way in, feeling that stretch in the rib cage, stretching the belly. Slowly exhale. Again, just come back to your intention. Bring your awareness to your heart areas, you breathe in. Relax your shoulders. Pick it up again here, back to earth breath. And, that's it, deep breaths, really feel that expansion, in. Relax your jaw on the exhale, let it all flow out, with the ha sound, that's it. In, sharp inhale, fill it right up, let it go. That awareness to each breath, follow it into your nose, into your belly, and out again. Feel that charging out. Connecting that deeper into a, a bit of wisdom within you. The mind shuts off. Feel it to your heartbeat. That's it, keep breathing. Let's see, really feel the rhythm of the music, connecting with the musiqueros, connecting with your heart, in, out. That's it, full breath. Feeling your energy, expanding, activating. Just know you are worthy. You're capable, you're powerful, each breath. You've done hard things, got it through things, accomplished great things. Believe in yourself, each breath, in. That's it. Deeper, deeper each breath. You sort of feel some sensations in your body, just try to like drop into it. Get out of the mind. So each breath deeper and deeper. You're doing great, don't give up. Try to keep that rhythm if you can. That's it, you've worked it for it. I know it's hard. Leave your mind, put thinking of all these reasons why you should stop, just stick with it, be worth it. Don't let the ego take control. Doing this for you, you deserve it. In. Deep breaths, that's it. That's it, great job, keep breathing. Belly, chest, exhale, belly, chest, exhale, great job. Relax the jaw, relax your shoulders, chin up to the ceiling. Eyes closed, going inward. Your awareness to your heart. Pick it up again here. There you go, air breath, in, out, in, out. To really find that rhythm, really go deep, push yourself here, in, out, in, out. That's it, you gotta keep going. That's it, keep going, in, out, in, out. Really letting go completely of your mind, getting into your body, feeling each breath, deeper and deeper. Doing great. Feel the energy rising within you. Confidence. Possibility, the potential, activating. Breaking free of limiting beliefs. Living thoughts, with no other search, each breath, let it out. Take a deep breath all the way in. And then hold it. Squeeze your pelvic floor for the energy rising into your spine. This time, just want you to let it out. Three, two, one. And then hold on empty. Just hold on empty lungs. Just sit with that empty hold here, relax your body. Just hear the show, it's prayer. Your heart, possibility, healing, transformation. Feel that stronger, to breathe, come back to our breath, slow deep inhale. Slow deep breath all the way in. Slow exit, let it go, relaxing the body. Here's full deep breaths all the way in. Feeling your body expand as deep as you can. If you're in a space where you can tone or make a noise, I'm gonna invite you to take another deep breath all the way in. And on the exhale, you can om ah, shake your body, three, two, one, all in. Back to earth breath. So in. And out. In. And a last round, do our best here to go all in. Really feel it in your heart. Although I can't see you right now, I feel you guys, great job, you put that effort in. For water breath, here we go. That's it, feel each breath, get that rhythm going, get out of your mind, your awareness to your heart. Deep breaths, full inhale, full exhale. Doing great, everyone, stick with it. Get up, here we go, air breath, in, out, in, out. Just do your best, feel it in your heart, believe in yourself. You are worthy, you are special. You're unique, beautiful. Stick with it, stick with it, keep going, we're almost there, don't give up now, you got this. Here we go, fire breath, go for it, full speed, last fire breath. Don't worry, you're going. Same, we're almost there, keep breathing, there are ten seconds, fire breath, last fire round. Two more seconds, almost there, three, two, one, take a deep breath all the way in. Just hold it, squeeze. And let go, three, two, one, buzz it out. It's coming back to our breath here, slowing our breath right down. All the way in through your nose. Just a slow, relaxed exhale. I invite you now with your eyes closed. Taking a slow, deep breath in, to think of or remember a moment in your life where you experienced an immense amount of gratitude. Think of a moment in your life you experienced an immense amount of gratitude. Could have been the birth of a child, something someone did for you, something you accomplished, a good friend, time in nature, your pet. Just go to that moment as if it's happening right now. Who's there with you? Just visualizing the sights and sounds, the colors and smells. Again, allowing time to completely stop this moment of gratitude. Invite you to feel into your body. What does the feeling of gratitude feel like in your body? What does the feeling of gratitude feel like in your body? Just slowly bring that feeling up to the center of your chest. Your next inhalation, breathing in this feeling of gratitude through your heart. Allowing it to expand through every cell in your body. Each breath, the feeling that gratitude expands beyond yourself. As you float away in an ocean of love and gratitude. The next I invite you to connect with a younger version of yourself. Could have been from when you were a young child, or last week, or a challenging moment in your life. That first version of you that comes into your awareness, go to them. And stare directly into your own eyes. And share this feeling from your heart to your heart, giving and receiving. What a miracle it is to give love, to give gratitude, but also to receive it. And in this moment, maybe there's something you need to say or to hear, to receive. What did you need in this moment that you can give to yourself right now? Or maybe it's just a whole space for yourself. Invite you to feel that connection, heart to heart. Staring deeply into your own eyes. Syncing your breath with this version of yourself. As you feel the connection to yourself deepen, I invite you to share a few words or statements, but more important than the actual words is the feeling, the intention behind each statement. Thank you. Thank you for not giving up. Thank you for all the ups and downs, the challenges, the growth. Thank you. Thank you for the mistakes we needed to make so that we could learn. Thank you for following your heart. Thank you for getting through such hard times. Thank you. I'm sorry. Sorry for being so hard on myself. Sorry for making mistakes, I'm sorry for hurting myself and others at times. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Again, staring into your own eyes, just feeling it in your heart, to say sorry to yourself. Again, tonight, deep breath in, staring into those beautiful eyes. I forgive you. I forgive you. I forgive you, we all make mistakes. It wasn't your fault, you didn't know any better, you were scared, you were hurt. I forgive you. And finally, staring into your own eyes, taking a final deep breath in. I love you. I love you. I love you for being you, for being different, special, and unique in your own way. For all of your gifts and all your perfect imperfections. I love you. Just embrace yourself, you can put your hand over your heart, give yourself a big hug. And just feel that shift that comes through forgiveness, compassion, and self-love. And even if right now it's just an ember, tiny spark. If you're alive, you've got that ember and spark within you, just know that from that you can start. The wildest, strongest fire. If you just believe in yourself, follow your intuition, keep moving forward. Asking for help, doing the work. Okay, so just take one more deep breath all the way in. Exhale with a sigh. I invite you just to set an intention, or say a prayer. For your wildest dreams to become reality, for that intention you set to come to fruition. And to really believe that anything is possible, your healing, your transformation. It's one hundred percent possible. And when you're ready, you can slowly sit back up and, I know the chat is off, but if you want to share your experience, and the Q and A will share some of them. Sharing, you'll see when you come to Rhythmia, it's very powerful. As it helps you to integrate your experience, when you share it out loud, you write it down. But also when other people share, it helps others, you know, to connect, to feel like they're not alone. So if you had an experience, you want to type it in as a question, we can read some of them out. And also, we're gonna open the floor for some Q and As, so we'll keep an eye here on the chat. Jessica Allman says, "I love you, thank you, that was incredible," thank you Jessica, I'm glad we could share that. And, yeah, as we're waiting for people to, to share, um, we'll answer some of the questions, and I just wanted to mention something, that if you're inspired to learn more, so if you haven't been to Rhythmia, and you felt something tonight, you've been feeling something, you're obviously on this email list for a reason, that, um, just hop on a call and reach out to Rhythmia Guest Consultants for a free information session. You go to rhythmia.com, uh, we can type the number, um, I think there'll be a number sent out in the email tomorrow. It's one eight four four two three six five six seven four, and just start that conversation, you know? Maybe even now you don't think it's possible, for whatever reason it might come with your head, but just make that first call. If you're feeling it. And the other thing is that right now is the perfect time, um, to book a trip because we're right in the middle of their, uh, Rhythmia Black Friday promotion. And if you've been on this list for a while, you know, they don't really, uh, discount so much because, you know, it's just such an amazing experience, but they're, they're making a very special offer. Right now, it's probably the biggest discount I've ever seen, um, so it's a great time to connect with, again, with the guest consultants. Check it out, ask them about the deal, and if you want to find out when I'm gonna be there, I'd love to hang out with you guys. My weeks are the funnest weeks at Rhythmia and the most powerful, well, those are the only ones I go to, so I don't have any other weeks compared to, because I'm not there the other weeks. But any week is a great week there, and I have friends that have gone other weeks, and, and they're, like, every week there is amazing, so I was just joking about what I said, but if you want to hang out with me, I'd love to meet you guys, you know, you can ask on the call when my next week is, uh, in February or May or next year. I'd love to, to connect. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read some of these comments here. Dr. Mariana, was there any questions we missed from earlier? I think you answered some of them in the chat.
Yes, I, I answered, it was mainly because of the technique, but yeah, some people sharing now, maybe we can read a, a little bit of them before ending our webinar.
Okay, cool, yeah, so, um, this will be recorded for replay at a later date, yes, I think it'll get sent out tomorrow if you want to do it again. Yeah, uh, someone, someone says, Nancy says the inhale was cold, is that normal? Depending on where you are, every, every breath work, we have physiological changes, so you might feel colder depending on how the air is, where you're at right now, so, yeah, different things will feel, um, different variables will make you to feel different things. Deborah said she had purging, starting in the third set, thank you so much, you're welcome Deborah, what a gift, thank you, uh, it's from Nick, you're welcome Nick. Jenny Garcia says, "Wow, that was so beautiful and powerful," thank you Jenny. Meg says, "Wow, truly grateful, I've just been looking into OBE, anything else you need to know on this journey?" Out of body experience, one, one book I would read for sure is Robert Monroe's books. Plant medicine breathwork is also a, a pathway into out of body experiences and these kind of, um, altered states of consciousness. So yeah, that's what I'd say about that, and just follow your heart, Meg. Dawn says, "That was so beautiful and calming, food for the soul," thanks Dawn, "freedom and peace are the gifts I have for myself by setting myself free, so others free," thanks Laura, it's beautiful. This was awesome, thank you, brought me right back to Rhythmia, that's Nancy. I hope I say this right, XIO, how do you pronounce that, Dr. Mariana? Joe? Xiao? XIO?
I think so.
Garcia, "I'm in tears right on my face," thank you. Anonymous attendee says, "Music is enchanting or powerful, is it available on a streaming service?" It's not, but it's in the aftercare program, some of these tracks that you can get in the Rhythmia Aftercare Program with the thirteen weeks of breathwork that's included in your stay at Rhythmia. Feather Bertrand, "Beautiful, thank you," started sneezing at first, "of asthma, this gave me great relief, I found myself touching the top of my head, it's possible that this is important," thank you, beautiful feather. Amazing, thank you both again, Benjamin. "Intense feeling of joy and gratitude and love and release of grief that came with forgiveness and love for my inner child and self," thank you Tricia. "I can't even type, the most powerful experience, can't stop crying." Thank you, Elite, "Good to see your name at least, it's been a while, uh, hope you're doing well." Sofia, "Thank you so much." Ben, "I know that I could fully embrace, love myself when I hugged myself." Okay, a little more breathwork, Ben. It's good to have the awareness, you know, there's, there's always a pathway, we have a, an awareness of a moment, and start asking questions and diving a little deeper. Courtney says, "Magical, I think I've felt that peaceful in a while," thank you, "I've topped off by Courtney." Richard tends to stream at the end, "I was forgiving myself," beautiful. Thank you, major releasing, okay, a lot of, uh, "Did the best I could with my four and one-year-old jumping on around me," I know what that's like, sure, my kid's a bit older now, but thank you for showing up anyways. Janan, "Thank you, integrated my recent week at Rhythmia, love this tonight." Gio, "Awesome, Janine." "That was unexpectedly profound," says Clint, "especially hugging the other version of myself, like we stared at each other in the eyes with such compassion and care and forgiveness, brought me to tears actually," beautiful Clint. Patricia, "Oh, we were together last week, thank you, yeah, it was a great week last week, I'm still kind of, uh, on a high." It's funny, walking through a room, it's like, "What is going on with this person?", it's like, you know, just glowing. Jessica, "Tears are streaming down like a release, not a cry." Jenna says, "Meditation brought me to tears, happy compassionate tears, wonderful, powerful," thank you, you're welcome Jenna. "I'm coming next month for the first time, I'll write Nancy, I was so excited for you." So can you please explain what the breathwork did physically? So, changing your breathing patterns, there's a lot of things in the body, um, specifically, um, in these breathing techniques, like it'll activate different, uh, parts of nervous system, like moving from sympathetic, parasympathetic to sympathetic. And also rhythmic breathing will change, uh, brainwaves from beta to alpha to theta, shutting off the prefrontal cortex, which is, um, where the rumination, the analytical mind kind of lives. And when that shuts off, uh, you get to a highly suggestible state, which is like alpha, theta, gamma, and the music can help get you into a gamma brainwave state as well. And that's where the meditation can go way deeper, so if anyone realizes, like, hey, I have trouble meditating, or, you know, when we went into that inner child meditation, it's the first time I felt gratitude like that, or got, was able to see my inner child, we hit a lot, because when you take that analytical mind out of the question and just shut it off, it's not blocking or creating, you know, fog or confusion or all these things, most of our minds are very active. Also, you know, the over-breathing. When, when, so when you're breathing, not in these breathwork experiences, you want to breathe slowly through the nose, reduce your breathing, but in, in these ones, what happens, the over-breathing actually starves the brain of oxygen for a little bit, because the extra oxygen is being held on, it's gonna get a bit scientific, the red blood cells, the hemoglobin will, will bind to the oxygen, uh, because there's no carbon dioxide to take it to the cells, because every time you exhale, you're blowing off carbon dioxide, it takes a while for it to build back up. So that slight, um, hypoxia, lower oxygen level in the brain, can create like almost a near-death simulation, and then you get this sense of euphoria. They, the, they hypothesize also, like, DMT can be released naturally in the body. It's found in the body, it's found in the lungs and the brain, and breathwork, you know, activates those two areas, and so it's hypothesized that when you do these breathwork experiences, you can release DMT, and that's where the visions and the colors come from. And it's funny that the same active ingredient that is in your body's nerve brain, which is DMT, is also the active ingredient in ayahuasca, if you didn't know, you know, ayahuasca is a vine and a leaf, and if you just ate the leaf, which are rich in DMT, nothing would happen, your, your enzymes in your stomach would dissolve them. But there's this ayahuasca vine that somehow, some way, they figured out to mix these two things together in the jungle and start, you know, trying things and seeing what happens, I, I can imagine what that was like, you know, these, or maybe it came to them in vision, they know exactly, but regardless, the vine has an MAO inhibitor that blocks your enzymes from digesting the DMT, so it can pass through the blood brain, blood brain barrier. So breathwork and ayahuasca kind of work in the same mechanism. So I hope that answers your question, Peggy. Or Pega, I'm sorry if I pronounced it wrong. Janice said she'll be back to Rhythmia, she said the summer, she loved it, had a massive release of grief for the recent death of my, death of my father, sort of hear that. Thank you, thank you, thank you, a lot of thank you. So Jane saw the burning bush from, uh, Moses. The bush is not consumed, just complete divine, saw the bush, beautiful Jane, "The three sessions with Rhythmia was insanely powerful," yeah, I remember you, Elite. "My dog's freaked out, would a recording be available?" Yes, Christine, "Coming for the recording, planning for my trip, May twenty-fifth," beautiful. All right.
It was such a powerful session, Gio, thank you so much for facilitating, um, and yeah, so, so many beautiful shares, uh, I think we're running a little bit ahead, it will, out of time, so.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to get through the shares.
Yes, it's okay, and, and it's so beautiful to share, that's also a big part of it, right after, uh, a breathwork session, uh, the sharing, it's just important, because it's sometimes the way to transmute that energy that maybe was moved throughout the, the session, so thank you for everyone that shared. Thank you, Gio, uh, for being here, for being with us, uh, tonight in this webinar, I hope that we do this again, um, and I don't know if you want to say any last words before we end our webinar. I hope that we do this again, um, and I don't know if you want to say any last words before we end our webinar?
I don't know where that music's coming from, sorry, I just wanna say, it's like, where's that music coming from? I just wanted to say thank you for all of you that have come here, and also again, like, if you're on the fence, make the call. You will, you will not regret it, you know, like, it's, it's just. Rhythmia's been the most life-changing experience, like I said, I brought my whole family there, including my mother. And I'm, I'm, I want to bring more people, I want to meet more of you people, so if you can be there that week. Um, and yeah, if you want to connect with me and have more questions about Rhythmia. Or breathwork, um, you can find me online, just Google my name, and you'll, you can find me on Instagram or anything like that. But yeah, keep, keep your, uh, eyes on the inbox. For the replay and, uh, the number to call to, to hop on, to book your, your session at Rhythmia, so. Hope to see you there, hope to see you again, and, you know, maybe we'll do another one of these, if you guys liked it, you know, I can come back and do the breathwork for you all. So, yeah, good luck, wishing you guys all, uh, beautiful evening and rest of your week, and, uh, hope to see you guys soon.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.